They, they, I, I asked the chairman to table.
Good God.
And they were ready to deny it again. At that point, though, honestly, I'm like, I'm like, what, I'm like, what am I getting called a motion? The motion's gonna be Judge Foster, you just make the decision. Like, motion to let the judge make the decision. Like, don't send it back again.
So, I mean, I just finished one in, uh, Bucksville. You know, with John Iklin.
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, I, I filled in there.
That was the same thing.
Yeah.
That board is bad.
Well, you have, they, they have all new members. Um, they should, they can, um, they can, um, they can, if it's, it's not long, they can read it. Yeah, um, yeah, there's no need for that.
A project?
Yeah. It is? Oh, God. It's, um, I don't know whether two of them have to say it or less. I did not know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
No, it's, you're right, it's, if you're under 2,500, it's six percent.
You're right, you are right. I just never assumed.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Like, area-wise.
The, hopefully it doesn't run this long, but I, I have a pretty hard stop at 9:30. If it does go down. And a conference call that starts at 9:30, I'd tell them it'd be a couple minutes too late, but.
Yeah. By tomorrow. Tomorrow's 15th day.
Open the Groveland zoning board of appeals meeting for, uh, August 21st, 2019, at 7:32 PM. Our agenda tonight has the, the continuation of application 2019 dash three for Sewell Street, Groveland Realty and Trust LLC, care of William Daley. Request a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of MGL 40B 20 dash 23 and 760 CMR 56 to construct 192 apartments in four residential buildings and a clubhouse with related amenities such as pool and associated access ways, sidewalk parking, utilities, and stormwater infrastructure located in the industrial zone district. Tonight we have Kathy Franzen, myself, Jason Norman, Chris Goodwin, John Stokes. We're also joined by Paul Havardi.
Havardi.
Havardi, that's it. I'm gonna get that right, one of these times.
We'll keep trying.
And Amy Quessler.
Quessel.
Quessel. And our clerk Rebecca Oldman. And before we open the meeting, I'd just like to read the rules of conduct for the public meetings. All attendees are required to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. The public is to refrain from private conversations which interrupt the proceedings of the board. An individual may not address the board without permissions of the chair. Each speaker will approach the podium, state their full name and address for the record, and will be limited to five minutes. All comments are to be directed at the board as a body and not at individual members or attendees. Uh, if there are any members in the audience or at home watching on TV that would like to submit written comments, please send them to the town office at the attention of the town planner. Alright, and I think the.
Good evening.
Wanted to say a few things before we.
I appreciate that. Good evening again. My name is Joel Khan with Equity Alliance. I'm the development consultant to the applicant. And by the way, I once had introduced 175 people and I had a list and I killed probably a third of those names along the way. So I note tonight, and I appreciate the fact that we've broken this into segments, and tonight's focus is on police and fire. As a result of, based on that, we'd like to introduce some additional facts that we didn't present as part of our initial meeting because of the details and wanted to focus them as part of tonight's discussion. The first, and I apologize Rebecca, I will get this to you in writing, but the architect sent it to me late today, are some information and facts about the building you're looking that is proposed for the site. First off, all residential buildings will be sprinkled in accordance with NFPA 13. This means that all inter, uh, all spaces, attic, closets, et cetera, are fully sprinkled. The buildings will be type 3A construction, meaning they will have two-hour rated exterior walls and one-hour rated elsewhere within the building. All floors and walls, both bearing and non-bearing, will have a one-hour fire rating. The staircases in the building will be two-hour rated and have standpipes. There will be a storage connection on the outside of the buildings. The main residential garage is non-combustible construction. However, it is an open garage and therefore need not be sprinkled. The residential garage under the building will be non-combustible construction and fully sprinkled in accordance with NFPA 13. And I know the police, the fire department will comment on this, I'm sure, later. There will be a two-hour separation between the garage and the residential above. The elevators in both buildings will be under firemen access for evacuation on non-ambulatory residents. Elevators will have an emergency generator backup. If fire pumps are required due to inadequate water pressure, they too will have emergency generator backup. Fire alarms will be in full compliance with local fire department regulations. And a couple of things that the architect also shared with me that I wanted to just sort of bring to, to your attention. And one of the questions we discussed was what are the effectiveness of a sprinkler system within a building? So I have a couple of factoids I'd like to, to add to my discussion. NFPA reports that there have been no firefighter or civilian deaths in apartments for the past 12 years. Operation Live Safety from data collected over several years on NFPA 13R sprinkler systems report that there have been no losses of life in buildings protected by NFPA 13R sprinkler systems. In wet systems, which are typically used in apartment, 60%, 67% of the fires are controlled by the activation of a single sprinkler, and a single-head activation controls 95% of all fires. 97% of the fires in sprinkler buildings are confined to the fire-rated compartment of origin. And a couple more for you. There has been no firefighter fatalities in a sprinkler apartment building for the past 12 years. This is the data that I have. And there have been no civilian fatalities in sprinkler buildings also for the same period, 12-year period of time. So that gives some sort of information on the building and its construction. And I know before, I'm sure there's plenty of testimony, I'd like to ask our engineer, Brian from Millennium Engineering, to also come up and discuss turning movements of fire apparatus throughout the site. And then at that point, we're happy to then listen to testimony and answer questions as they might be. Brian?
And Rebecca, I will get all that to you till you don't have to remember it by heart.
Okay, good evening. My name's Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering. I'm project manager on this project. I do have handouts here for the board, if that's okay? You got? Make sure I got an out there. Okay. Got it. Okay, what you see in front of you on this nine-page handout is looking at the major intersections, starting at the intersection of Sewell and Salem, and it follows upset, or up Sewell to the entrance to the development. And then these turning templates follow the ma, the primary road that goes into the development. As you can see from the, uh, the handout here, we've looked at both the entering and exiting for a ladder truck. Just so everyone's familiar, the ladder truck that we've used for this, the dimensions on it are 41 and a half feet long, eight and a half feet wide. The wheelbase in between it is 19 feet 10 inches. This is sort of a average-sized ladder truck. Depending on what the Groveland department has, if their vehicle is a couple feet longer, we can certainly rerun these templates with that sized truck, truck on it. But typically that size represents about a 75-foot ladder truck on it. So, uh, the idea was to show on these plans was that the vehicles stay within the curb lines of the roadway out there, uh, and allowing the trucks to get access to each of the buildings on it. The roadways within the development are 24 feet wide. That makes it a little bit easier on the turning movements. And then as we enter into parking areas or smaller roadways that travel to some of the other buildings, we also have a 24-foot wide aisle for those as well. So, um, typically you might see in other developments, a smaller width on accessways or driveways within a condo development. We have gone with the, uh, the wider roadway in this instance for this purpose, for safety purposes on it. You'll also see in the plans that were submitted at the beginning of this, there are sidewalks associated with the project that access, that provides pedestrian access to all buildings. And the reason why I bring that up is because we also have fire hydrants in the development right now. We're showing three hydrants in the upper area of the development. We'd like to work with the fire department on that. They may see a better spot for a hydrant, or we would like to ask for an additional hydrant somewhere. We would certainly like to sit down with the fire department and work through those, those issues. As well as, I'd like to see the fire department review the, uh, turning templates on it, have a discussion about the size of their ladder truck, their biggest vehicle, just to make sure that we cover all the bases on this. And safety's an important consideration in these develop, developments, and it's something that we really want to promote with the town and with the fire department on it. Additional information relative to, uh, fire safety is we do have a looped, uh, water system in the development on it. It's a very close loop in that it ties in Sewell Street close to each other, but it does allow for the flow of water and allows for secondary access in case there is a problem with one portion of the pipe. It would be able to shut that down and, uh, move the water into the other pipe up in the development. So we've tried to cover the bases on, uh, what's required for the fire protection. If there's any questions on any of the templates, if you see any of the areas in there where you may have a question on it, I'd be happy to ask them, or answer them at that point. With that, I'd like to turn it back to Joel.
So finally, again, you know, as, as you're getting a sense of 40B, while we've gone to, uh, extensive work, preliminary work to understand and make sure the site was functional, there are many things that obviously get worked out, um, over time. As an example, you know, um, where would the master fire box be located? How would the fire department, would it communicate with the fire department? Some like to be dedicated phone lines, some towns, some like cellular technologies today. And we will work with the, the town and its fire department to ensure that the system is compatible with the systems that they have in place, and so that it also is intuitive and laid out to ensure that they can identify if there was a problem and where it, if the problem occurs, and be able to deal with it effectively. This is a woodstruck podium construction. That means that the garage level is, uh, you know, basically more like a concrete-encased enclosure, um, where, which protects therefore the upper floors appropriately. We do not for one second take lightly the responsibility of safety for our residents. We want them to feel that this is their home. And so we take these things seriously. We look forward to the input, um, from, uh, fire and police, and we are certainly here to offer any, uh, answer any questions that anybody might have.
Invite the fire department to comment and discuss it first, since obviously they've covered a lot of that detail right all at once.
Uh, my name is Kurt Rochelle, I'm the assistant fire chief in town. And we do have, um, I wouldn't say the concerns, but just, you know, issues that we have to work through, um, at this point. Talked a little bit about the, uh, our ladder truck. Our ladder truck was purchased for a town with 35-foot height restriction. Uh, I believe this building's gonna be 75 feet at the peak, so we have a small ladder truck compared to probably other towns where these buildings go in. So that's one concern. The second concern is that there's issues with, um, turnarounds. The fire code requires 150 feet, no more than 150 feet before you have to put it like some type of a cul-de-sac turnaround, or a teak turnaround, or hammerhead turnaround. So, um, some of these parking lots are 274 feet long, so they are quite a bit more than what's allowed by the fire code. Let's see, what else do we have? Uh, we don't have access for the, on all sides of the building. The fire code, once again, requires another 150-foot, um, unit measure, but basically you have to have a fire road up until, uh, the point where you can get to every part of the first floor of the building within 150 feet. And it looks like they may be able to do that, but our issue is we do have a call fire department in this town. So, uh, more than likely than not, if it's during the day, during the week, and we respond to a fire in this building, we're probably gonna have two or three people, uh, responding. So we don't have access to the firefighters during certain parts of the day of the week where other towns would with this building. So, uh, we, we make up for that as we use tools and apparatus. So accessing outside of the building with our apparatus will make those two or three people much more effective versus having to take a ladder off the truck, run around the back of the building with the ladder and try to get someone off a balcony. So that's another concern for us. And I think that was about it. We only have looked at preliminary, um, drawings at this point. We have not seen permit drawings, but anything that's in the fire permit drawings, including a sweep pass analysis stamped by a registered fire, uh, registered traffic engineer, that's also required by the fire code. And the turnarounds are an issue. So, I think that's, that's about all we have, but we have not seen permits set, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, actually, before you?
Yeah, sure.
So, given the plan that you see, that he's got it up here on the easel here. Where would you propose a turnaround, or what would you propose that might work better for the fire department? If you could draw it yourself?
I don't think from a liability standpoint, you want me drawing it by myself.
But I mean, if you had your. But if the fire department had an opinion on how that would work?
Right here, this parking lot, the, I scaled it off the drawings that we were, we were provided, and I believe that's like 274 feet.
Okay.
So, we'd have to, we'd come down here, we have to back out. Echo says that, if we have to back out of them, it would only be 150 feet.
You'd like to see a hammerhead somewhere in the middle?
Somewhere, do something so that we beat the fire code.
Would connecting it to, is there a reason it's not connected to Nelson Street? And those two?
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed. We, we recognize that that is an important aspect, so that's, that's.
So if that did, let's say it did connect to Nelson Street, would that work for what you're talking about?
For these two, yes. For this one, no.
Yeah, that one.
And then this one here.
Obviously, not gonna be able to connect to Nelson Street.
This is a 20-foot, um, wide street. That probably would suffice for us to turn around if, if the sweep path analysis, they have.
That one would be, building number three would be okay?
Yeah, that one, that, as long as that, that was wide enough for us to get down.
Except you need access to all four sides.
We would, yeah, we would like access to all four sides so we could utilize our apparatus to make up for our firefighter shortage, the best we can. It's what we have in town. So, uh, if I had 25 firefighters on, on duty, I would probably say it would leave me a problem, but, um, we don't.
So given the plan presented, you would have trouble reaching the backside of, let's say, building three and building four?
Right now, yes. That would require us, if there was someone on the backside of that building needing rescue, we have to get off the apparatus, grab a ladder, bring it around the backside of the, the building. I believe some of these balconies are gonna be up now five stories because it's platform construction. So, we would have to take our really long ladder, and that one may not even, our really long brown ladder, but that one may not even be tall.
What's your longest ground ladder now?
35 foot.
So, and we're looking at, what's it, to the top floor of these buildings?
I, I don't have any elevations, that's one of the things I would be looking for. But I would say if you're up on, on a, um, a platform constructed building, you probably have 40 feet.
You'd figure 10 feet of floor, so.
Yeah, 40, 40 or 50 feet up.
So you're not gonna reach.
We're not gonna reach.
And that loop, is that, there's a hydrant loop, it's going on Sewell, back to Sewell? Is that gonna be adequate for you guys, or would you rather see a loop back to Salem Street?
I don't know what size the main's gonna be. It all depends on what the, what.
You know what I'm saying, though, if you start pulling water.
Right, right. I think the main on Salem Street. 12 inch, that's what I thought, 12 inch. So if they come in, I believe in the main of 12 inch.
Now, you're gonna be okay.
And if they, you know, they branch it out and they wanna go smaller. From our standpoint, we need, um, the sprinkler demand plus our hose demand, so. That's already done by the engineers when they have worked on the plans.
But does the, does the 12 inch sound adequate to you?
The biggest one we got on that street, so.
That's what I'm, but is that adequate for all, for what you're talking about? That's what I'm asking.
For a fully sprinkled building, yeah, it should be, it should be adequate.
If all the sprinklers are going and you need your water too, that should be enough to feed everyone?
Yeah, there's requirements in the code that they have to follow of the design of the system, so.
Okay.
Can your ladder hit the peak of the, the edge of the roof so you can get up and cut a hole?
I would say that we would barely make, um, from my calculations right now, center line of here to the face of the building are about 44 feet.
Yeah.
We're about 44 feet. And then with our 75-foot ladder, we probably make around 50 feet at the face of the building. So there's no way we're gonna get further up on the roof.
Your longest roof ladder is what, 16 feet?
16 feet long. So, there, there's issues. We have a small ladder truck, that's, we, it, it's fine for the rest of the buildings in town. These are big buildings for us. It's, um, so those are, those are our big concerns at this point that we saw on the, on the preliminary, uh, drawings.
John, did you have any other questions for the fire department?
From what I can see, it's a wood frame building with, uh, floor trusses. Is that correct?
Well, right now, we haven't seen any, any, only architectural plans and, you know, schematic from the outside. We haven't seen what the, what it's, how it's designed in the inside from a structural standpoint yet.
What's the distance between stairwells in the code, is it?
Travel distance, um, that would be, that would be for the, um, the building inspector.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah. No, it's, it's typically.
I'm trying to remember myself.
It's about 250 feet travel distance, so you could be up like 500, 400 or 500 feet between stairwells, so.
Between stairwells?
Yeah. As long as your travel distance meets the building code.
And one last question I had. The turn radiuses that they just presented, I, I saw Rebecca give you a copy, did you get a chance to take a peek at it? Did you have any comments or questions on those? Did they think they were adequate or inadequate?
I mean, their, their, their path analysis, what, one thing I did see on them was that they crossed the center line, and I don't believe the, when you do your, your sweep path analysis, that the fire code allows you to use the opposite coming lane to do your analysis. I'd have to double-check that, but I'm pretty sure it says you have to stay in your lane, so you can't cross over. And that all will be done by the, the registered traffic engineer, um, when they, they provide that and they stamp it.
Well, they, the engineer referenced the size of the, um, the ladder truck that they were assuming, which was, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, please. I was writing quickly, 41 and a half inches by eight and a half feet wide by 19 feet 10 inches?
Uh, the 19?
It's the wheelbase.
I was writing too quick, I didn't catch everything, so I just wanna make sure that what we have is fits in that parameter.
The length of the truck was 41 and a half feet.
Forty, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the width was eight and a half.
Okay.
And the wheelbase, in between the wheels, for a tri-axle ladder truck was 19 feet 10 inches, I believe.
Thank you. And so, given, given that, those parameters, does that fit with what the town has?
I, like I said, our truck's much smaller than that.
Okay.
We, we have a sin, but it's not gonna reach the, the building.
Right.
That's the, that's the whole problem. So I would say that if it's a standard, um, dual-wheel, 100-foot, um, that they're using, it's probably gonna be adequate. For at least the, you know, this, this exercise. But, like I said, our truck is a single-axle 75-foot.
I think you said you used a 75-foot truck.
He did use a 75.
So.
The biggest problem is, you normally throw them, it's, what's around 70 degrees, okay, chief?
For, for the turning?
The best angle you can throw so it's comfortable to climb is somewhere around.
Yeah, I would say about 70 feet, yeah. Yeah, 70 degrees.
But you're gonna lose, you know, that's the hypothesis of trying.
Well, yeah, we did that out, that's, uh, so we're gonna have an angle of about 50, 51 degrees if we're, if we're in the middle of that parking area. Um, and we're gonna basically be about 50 feet up on the face of the building, or so, give or take.
But the roof begins where?
I don't know, I don't have any elevation drawings yet to look at. But I don't know, I don't know how high the eve is off of the ground.
No, we don't have formal elevation drawings, we have sketches. Not actual, scaled.
I know a big hangup for me would be access on all four sides. Especially if you gotta get people out.
The big, yeah, that's the biggest stuff, the issue for us is, is getting access to all those balconies from the aerial. Um, and then secondary, it's still a concern, but is access in the roof.
And you're not gonna have time.
No.
You're just not. You can't ask guys to run around with ladders, and they're not gonna reach.
No, and then in the wintertime too, if there's no pathway there, it's not.
Even if you go to cut a hole, how are you gonna get up there?
Right. So.
May I just ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
I presume, though, you have mutual aid with the city table?
We do.
Okay, and I just wanna know what, what is, do you happen to know the size of their ladder truck?
We get an engine from the city table.
They have a ladder truck that's within the city? Do you happen to know what the size of that might be?
95.
95 foot, which gives them a height capacity of, okay.
Gotta go do the math, I haven't done math yet.
Okay. And, and well, the only other comment I'll send, feedback is, is that I appreciate your comments regarding circulation, and honestly, I think those are the things we can address through fine grading and circulation around the site. And so I don't believe that that's truly an issue that can't be addressed, as plans are advanced. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming out too. I, you answered a lot of questions that I've had since the beginning, so.
Okay.
I appreciate your help.
And our, our biggest concern is, and we, we fully understand that it's a fully sprinkled building. We get that, and, and that's a great thing. But we also have to be, from the standpoint of our apparatus and our ability to fight a fire in the building, we still need to be able to, to function on that fire ground if something happens, if something goes wrong. I mean, that's why we're here, is when things go wrong. So, uh, that being said, any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Anything else you wanna, do you have any other questions in regards to that?
I don't.
Not good so far.
Public comment, also, um.
We can call them back if, if necessary at a later date, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And Paul also mentioned too that traffic will look at this pretty intently as well too, so. But, do you wanna ask a public comment about fire?
Yeah, let's do that first.
Public comment for fire, and then do another one for police? Do that, just to break it up?
Or you wanna do it, yeah?
Alright, that's fine, I just wanna make sure we're not, you can do them what we're supposed to, yeah? Okay.
If anybody has any, any other comments in regards to the, the fire concerns that are dis.
If anybody has any, any other comments in regards to the, the fire concerns that are discussed, or the, um, anything in that space, we'll cover the, the police right after. I don't know if any of the public would like to comment on the, apparently no. All right, I'd like to invite the police to come up and make their comments.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Gill, I'm the police chief here in Groveland. Um, we did meet once already on, um, some of my concerns, we met, it was a few months ago, I guess, and not so much that I have, um, regulations, but maybe just some concerns, and a lot of them were addressed at that, uh, previous meeting, um, such as building numbers, you know, when officers and firefighters go to calls, are they gonna be able to find the apartments easy enough, um, from a security point of view, lighting, maybe some, uh, security cameras, things such as that, and, um, I think we talked that that was kind of already in the work, so, I felt good about that. I do have concerns about maybe the traffic out on Sewell Street and Salem Street, especially with Chesterton across the street, that's a pretty big operation, it's already somewhat of a dangerous area with, uh, there's also Greenwood Autobody there, so I would hope that we could maybe consider some type of traffic signage, and, um, for pedestrians, maybe when they're coming out of this development, that there'd be a crosswalk and a sidewalk on that development that gets them across Salem Street to safely cross, and, um, 'cause there is a sidewalk on the other side of, of the street there on Salem Street. So again, a lot of my concerns, I, they've already, I think, addressed, I, I do worry about the amount of people that this is gonna put into town all at once, that I think we could all assume it's gonna be a few hundred people, so from a staffing point of view, in the police department, we, at night, we have two officers and, believe it or not, Groveland now and then does get backed up with calls where we are relying on other towns to help us with certain calls, and that really just takes one call and we do have some problems, so, um, I, I, I think at some point we gotta think about more staffing for the police, and, um, also for the fire service, it's, it's gonna put somewhat of a strain on us with other utilities and things, but, otherwise, it, it seems though that they, uh, they certainly have done this before and they, they've addressed the simple things that I can think of, again, not because, um, I don't, I don't do this, but, um, it's not regulations, it's just more common sense, what you would want for public safety and, and for the safety of the officers, so that's why I think of staffing and making it so that they can respond and get the help to the folks that may need it in that development.
I do have a question, if you have a minute, um, so, you were saying that this area seems a little bit dangerous 'cause of Chesterton, can you maybe elaborate on that, maybe what types of calls you've received in this area, maybe what's happened there that makes you say that?
It's the, um, part of it is, there's a hill, um, if you were to pull out of Sewell Street and take a left, there's sun over hills, so it's, it's a concern there where, it, it always been kind of a concern just with Chesterton, it's, it's a busy area, um, I don't have crash data available, and I'm not saying it's, it's, uh, that dangerous that there's a lot of crashes there, I think this is gonna add to that area as far as a concern for traffic safety, and again, pedestrians, um, if you wanna even go out further, I'm, I'm a little worried about what it's gonna do to the intersection of, uh, Route ninety-seven and Salem Street at the Tea Garden in the Coles. I, I think sooner than later that, that we're gonna have to look at putting real traffic lights there, there we do have, um, a lot more crashes, it's probably one of the more busier places for, for motor vehicle crashes, mainly 'cause you got people coming out of the Coles and trying to turn, and it's got that passing lane on the right. It's hard for me to project what type of traffic flow we're gonna have coming from this development, but I think we can assume it's gonna add to that congestion there, so I, I think there's gonna need to be a study, or if there's something that can be done sooner than later to deal with the traffic at that intersection, um, we do get complaints and that is a problem.
What about the intersection on Salem and Washington, is, I know it's a four-way stop, but I tend to hear stories that are probably not necessarily all that accurate, but.
Yeah, no, they probably are accurate, we do, the people that see things there, they'll say that when a car goes through that stop sign, they really go through it, it's like they don't see it, um, that's probably another place you'll see, um, real traffic lights, working traffic lights, I should call them, um, that there is a little more control where it is a four-way.
Mm-hmm.
The one that I mentioned earlier on Route ninety-seven is more, some people just don't slow down and they're passing on the right, or, um, it's just a lot going on there, but that is a good point, that is something else that should be considered, but, it's just a, um, it's kind of a narrow road Salem Street, and again, there's, you got Sewell Street, you got Nelson Street, you got the, the couple businesses right there, so, this will certainly add to that in, in some way.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I may, just to follow, thank you, chief, I appreciate the comments, um, obviously the questions regarding Washington Street and ninety-seven are things that the traffic, uh, review will, will discuss in more detail, and, you know, I'm hoping that you all retain the expertise of a traffic expert to review the report that we submitted. Um, since some of you may not have been part of the board of selectmen meeting where the chief referred to, we discussed cameras, I figured I might, uh, elaborate so you all understand what is proposed. So, we don't do active surveillance of our residents coming in and out of the building, what, what we have is, um, in typical projects that I've involved in, is we have cameras on all exit points of the building, and, as well as in the garage, and the purpose of it is really not so much to, one could do active as much as forensic, that should there be a problem, that one could go back and we carry, typically carry thirty-plus days of tapes that we have as backup, so that, in fact, if there was an issue, um, it could be investigated. The second thing is, is that our doors from the garage into the elevator core, from the exterior doors into the building, are all card access for the, uh, residents, so therefore, every time their particular card is swiped, we have a timestamp of exactly when they entered the building. Now again, we don't do that, there's lots of controversy about whether or not card readers on unit doors are appropriate, some will argue that's invasion of privacy, others won't, we do, that, that we're not suggesting, but we do it on all the points of egress, so, should there be an incident, we have who the person was potentially, and we have a camera that we can go back to that timestamp, and we can provide those to the police department as part of their investigation, um, so, we, we do those things actively. The other thing is, is that relative to, um, guests who come to the buildings, on the current Massachusetts statute, we're required to do both a camera and intercom, so the party in their, in unit actually can quickly, with a small LED pad by their door, see who is requesting access, so they can identify who that party is. And so, those are all measures, to be quite honest, is that the chief has his concerns, of course, for the protection of residents, we too wanna have concerns to make sure that it's a safe environment for our residents and they feel comfortable, and so, like an example, areas where there's enclosed garages, yeah, we make sure we have cameras that cover all those areas, should an incident happen, and we certainly hope that it never does, uh, that we can do something about it. We even go so far in typicals that we even have a camera aimed at the dumpster pad. You say, well, why would you do that necessarily, well, of course, people love to dump the things that they shouldn't, mattresses and furniture and what have you, and, uh, in other projects I've been involved in, we are very quickly to figure out who that was, and then we quickly have them go and, uh, obviously address it since that's not permitted, um, in what we're trying to accomplish. So those are the kinds of security things that we, uh, try to do to, uh, make it work for both the, uh, police department as well as the residents of the project, and with that, I'll answer any other questions that you.
Is there gonna be a superintendent on site or that lives at the site, on these buildings, or?
I, I don't really, to be quite honest, know that yet, I, I do know a couple things I can tell you, is that, uh, that Bill, I like Bill, he's a nice guy, but he can't manage the property, especially during lease-up stage, that we will have a third-party professional management. Uh, typically, a hundred and ninety-two units is staffed, uh, initially as three people in the office, uh, manager, assistant manager, and a sales staff, and two maintenance people. Um, whether or not somebody lives in the project, to be quite honest, it depends on the staffing, a lot of these people sometimes have houses and families elsewhere, but, uh, we have found, at least in a couple that I've been involved in, in Salisbury and, and Tootsbury, that sooner or later, somebody on the maintenance staff wants to live at the project, and we offer them usually attractive ways to do that, but it's no guarantee, it's really up to where they want to live. But we're happy if they do. Yeah, but there's also.
If something happens at night, who we're gonna get?
Well, we have an emerg.
Who can they get there?
We have an emergency call system that well establishes that if there's anything to do with fire alarms, security issues, you know, that the, the people are notified automatically, and it's twenty-four hour answering service is always with those call and numbers, so, those are always things that we make sure, um, and I'll give you an example, which goes probably to the fire department's concerns as well, in Salisbury, you know, we had the person come back one day with their groceries in their paper bags, and they had the teenage daughter in the room, and they go set their bags on the stove top and go take the dog for a walk, not knowing the daughter had left the stove on. Now, the sprinkle head went off right away, the fire was put out long before the fire department ever got there, but the next thing that happens in buildings is, that's a lot of water, 'cause the water will run continuously until the fire department stops it, and so, of course, the water then perminulates down, and then, of course, there were people below an issue like that, we had management staff on there and twenty-four hour responders to get the dehumidifiers and take out sheetrock and take out bed rugs within hours, that we were, were addressing it, and then took care of making sure people were there and in safe, wherever they needed to be that night, and, uh, though I was not particularly happy with the resident, and all residents are required to have insurance, so yes, their insurance ultimately paid for it, but, you know, in the world that, where you try to anticipate what could happen, then you get somebody who does something that intuitively one would say, that's crazy, you know, but, we, we, we really try to make sure that we, through professional management, have the infrastructure in place to address these things if and when they might happen.
I do have one quick question.
Sure.
What, is there a plan, I, I don't recall seeing it, but that doesn't mean it's not there. Is there a gate at the front that you would, let's say, um, you know, somebody's mother wants to come and visit, do they buzz them in and that's, or do they go to the building and get buzzed in?
They go to the building and buzzed in, we're not, we're not putting a control gate down at the bottom, that's not what's proposed.
All right.
I know in Florida, you go to everybody's gate to be, under the heck, they live behind walls, uh, which I never understood.
Well, it does have an effect for fire and police, that's why I was asking.
Yes, it does, yeah, no.
Okay.
That's not our intention.
And how would, how would the police department get into the building, should there be an issue, so?
Oh, we have knock boxes and provide everything, including in that box, all the master keys and all the other stuff, as well as card access, we give them everything and anything to make sure they can gain access to the building, uh, absolutely, and each building separately.
Thank you.
And like I said, where the master box goes is really a preference to local fire department, often they like it in, sometimes at the club house, some, it just depends on when the fire department gets our license, you know, fire, you know, the designer or engineers in play, they'll work through those kind of details, it's whatever they really particularly want. Used to be, they used to have direct lines to the fire department, now, believe it or not, many communities in the Commonwealth, they're all cell connections, they prefer that as the advantage, we do have good self-coverage up there, but that's up to the fire department again.
Anything else for, I don't know, I'm just, we have any other public comment on the?
Are you public comment?
No, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, I was, uh, I was not hearing any, so I was gonna ask where we go next, and I was gonna look to see whether or not traffic was the, uh, we had contracted for traffic, since I think traffic is evident an important part of the discussion.
Has there been any discussion with the town or any of the neighbors about the, the entry on the Salem Street at all, or is, I don't know if anything has already been discussed in that at all, but.
No, the only, the only conversation that had, has happened at all, I mean, we presented this to the board of selectmen early on when we did this discussion, uh, we have obviously made this town aware of these ish, of what we're proposing to do, and the only discussion which recently about is a proposed, uh, self-storage down on Nelson Street, and about what they were doing and how that impacted that right-of-way, and that's been communicated, our concerns of ensuring that, uh, they do nothing to limit the use of that right-of-way, which we have rights to, um, and honestly, I think that's being dealt with accordingly, so, um, beyond that, no. We have submitted, as you know, a full traffic study and, and are looking forward to peer review of that report.
Yeah, we'll be going through the peer review tonight and finalizing that.
We did finally receive information from all of the, 'cause la, at the last meeting, we had only received some information from one candidate, so it didn't seem fair to just pick the one who submitted. It was sort of short notice, so, uh, we did get, um, information from several different, um, engineers, so, the plan was to have all of us review it, which we've all done, and we're prepared to assign that this evening.
Okay.
So that's sort of our next step.
Okay.
We figure we could do the public portion first, then we'll get to our portion.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Anything else in the publics?
Does the board want to address the site visit and maybe give the public an overview as to some of the things that the board has seen?
We did a site visit, we walked the full site, um, I don't know if anybody has any comments. It definitely gave some perspective, but I don't think there were any specific things that I came out with that would be, that would impact the overall plan.
It didn't rain, did it?
Beyond what's, yeah.
No, no, it didn't.
Beyond the plans, I mean, it just gave overall perspective for me, about the layout and everything.
Yeah, I, I think that was the biggest part for me, with the perspective of the, different elevations in play and, and, and all this, all gonna lean with each other, so.
Yeah, as a, oh, go ahead. The fire department cap, um, it stepped, the three buildings, or those first two I know are stepped, so it's, you know, you're gonna have the parking lot and, and your cell, your, uh, parking lot under, and that's gonna be, that's ground level, on the other side, the entryway to the apartments is ground level, so you're adding ten feet. You know what I'm saying?
The building is four-story over podium construction, so if the podium construction, the parking level is exposed wall, yes, you pick up an extra twelve feet of elevation, and in the package submitted, there was, uh, elevation in the building that showed the various heights, um, of that building.
I'd like you guys to be aware of that.
Yeah, that's, Joe, Joe's done some calculations and, my only concern was when we parked, five or six feet to the edge of the back of the car, we put the jacko in the truck.
You're gonna talk over the microphone?
I was just throwing that out there so you folks will have a note. Okay?
You want to say, okay?
I was just gonna say, we did the site visit yesterday, it was probably half an hour, we just walked the whole perimeter, uh, we did the full hike, even though there was a lot of bugs, but we did it anyway, so we were able to walk the whole perimeter of everything, and for me, I think it was really good to just, you know, you take it from this to the big picture and see all the slopes and steps and stuff, and it, it really was just helpful, but, nothing major came from that, it was just.
What I found amazing the first time I went was, is when Bill described the fact that when they removed the material from the pit, how quickly they excavated that face out. That, that to me, 'cause when you look at it, you sit there and go, oh my God, look at the amount of material that must have come out of there, and you said that they removed it in how long?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, so, there must have been trucks back then just hauling out of there unbelievable quantities of materials for that, it certainly is not gonna go back as quick as it went back, it took, got taken out.
Close the public. Then we'll discuss the.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, or, not the public hearing, I'm sorry, the public comment section, thank you, at eight-twenty. Now we'll move on to deliberation. What, I'm sorry?
Before you vote on that?
Wait a minute, hold on, what?
Before you vote on that, there's a topic I think that the board needs to discuss.
Yes.
And it was addressed actually in the memo that the board received in its packet.
Yes, that's right, from the assessor.
Yes, I don't see a.
But yeah, it actually came in just today's packet, so we. During public comment, do it as a department comment?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I don't know that you need to go through the entire letter, but the, the first, um, numbered paragraph says forty-beat limits projects to a hundred and fifty units for towns under ten thousand people, which is not technically accurate, um, it doesn't base those requirements on the number of people, it bases it on the number of year-round housing units, um, and it's not actually, the limit isn't a hundred and fifty, uh, because Groveland is less than twenty-five hundred year-round housing units, uh, the total for the large project exemption under seven-sixty CMR fifty-six point zero-three-six, um, it's six percent of your total year-round housing units, which works out to about a hundred and forty-five units, so that is a safe harbor that this board has available to them, um, and the way the process works is that in order to invoke a safe harbor, you have to provide notice to the applicant within fifteen days of the opening of the public hearing, um, the public hearing was opened fourteen days ago, so you would wanna provide that notice today, providing that notice does not mean that you have to. Providing that notice does not mean that you have to close the hearing and deny a project or approve a project with conditions right now. All it means is that you have that, you've protected your rights, and then you can move forward, you know, the same way you would have one way or the other. And it doesn't have to come up again until the end of the proceeding.
Okay. Yeah, let me read, since we brought it up, let me read the comments here, and then we'll address the overall scope. This is from the assessor's office, and the town assessor wrote...
Sir, can I just interrupt for one second? I read that same letter, and if you turn to page two, it is signed in what capacity? It says so very clearly under the signature line, it was signed as resident. And so, I just wanna tell you to be very careful here, is that for whatever reason, this particular individual chose to use the letterhead of the town to voice its personal belief as a resident of the town, its views to this project. And they shouldn't be, they're not one in the same.
Yes, you are correct. It is based on a resident, even though they did use the town letterhead, but we'll address it as...
But it actually says both at the signature.
Yeah, it says, well, see this...
I think she was identifying herself as the office manager.
It says as office manager.
And a resident. That's how I interpreted it.
I understand, but I think, though, that it, I think it was inappropriate in its form, and I'm not gonna disagree with its contents, per se, but I just wanna point that out, that I think that her comments were more in the capacity as a resident in this regard.
Yeah.
No, I think we agree with you that this is...
Okay.
This is comments of the resident, but from, just to avoid any issues of conflict, this is comments from the assessor, the assessor's office manager. Just, because I don't wanna avoid any conflict of interest in terms of who's actually making the comments.
But in all fairness, we're all residents.
Yes.
So, all of us, we're all residents.
To read the relevant sections, she lists off a number of points, which, again, we're not saying are fact or true, or in any way, we're just reading the comments. Issue number one is 40B limits projects of 150 units for towns under 10,000 people. She had a question, "Are the deeds restricted in perpetuity?" Access to one of the buildings appears to be limited for public safety reasons, such as a fire, which I would guess assumes the backsides of the buildings. Possible expansion of the sewer will severely impact the southern end of town, which we haven't really dug into the civil side of it. We'll address that in a future meeting. But yes, in regards to the first comment in particular...
And with regard to the second numbered paragraph, the board's decision will require the project to be affordable in perpetuity, so that shouldn't be a concern for the board.
And subject to a regulatory agreement to be executed between the parties. If I can add and just add, the consultant too, is that it's our belief that in the 2020 census, that the obligations of the town to meet the 10% affordability will rise. And so, while it is true that I know the regulation specifically in question, it's our belief in the appropriateness of this site as a 40B, that the number of units will also help to achieve, as the census is recast and the affordability level increase, because your population has increased, will help to, again, to achieve, if not the 10%, but certainly much closer to it. So, I hope you'll take that into account as you consider the discussion. Thank you.
Any comments on all of that?
I think mainly comments that, I think it's probably a good idea to protect our rights under the safe harbor. Is there...
Very good idea.
I don't think it makes any sense not to.
Exactly.
Right.
So...
Just to keep it open.
It does not tie you to any particular course of action. It is just protecting your rights, providing the notice to the applicant that the town does meet one of the required safe harbors as being a large project exemption. And to follow, follow that up with a written notification tomorrow. And that really addresses the issue unless, you know, there are concerns that the applicant has that they wanna express. I don't think you need to do any more at this time.
Should we do that as a motion, or is that...
It should be done as a formal motion, yes.
Are there any chapters that we need to cite or anything like that, or?
It's the large project exemption. It's 760 CMR 56.036D.
Can anyone get past CMR?
No.
760 CMR, 56.036. So, that's a parenthesis around the six, and then parenthesis around the D.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good thing somebody studies all this and memorizes them all.
That's why we have them.
All the time. All right, so...
You wanna make a motion, or?
Chris, did you wanna make the motion?
The motion is going to be to, the motion will be to invoke the safe harbor, preserving your rights.
All right. So, I'd like to make a motion to invoke the safe harbor, large projects exemption under 760 CMR 56036.
D.
D.
While preserving your rights.
Well, to preserve our rights, under that act.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
He didn't ask for my vote.
That's right.
And again, I hope in good faith that, you know, while I understand and appreciate the, what you needed to do, that we can still work together and work through the discussions as well as the peer review, and we'll see where it takes us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section of the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And just, we can discuss the...
I can't wait to draft the letter.
Peer review.
Copy has to go to the HCD, so I'll send this to the...
Right.
As well.
Probably might have a few questions for you as well.
I'm not going anywhere yet.
Likely know some of these people, but as well.
You do.
I just took one last week.
So, did everyone get a chance to look at all of the applications, I'll call them, or qualifications?
Yes.
Yes.
How do you wanna do it? Do you wanna do it like one by one, or do you wanna maybe just see what people think and go from there?
Is there a copy of the proposals that you've received? I don't receive, or one of them. I don't know if there's others. But if not, it's okay.
Actually, there, if Rebecca had given me a packet, and I had already had them all printed, so I do have an extra?
I do. I have, I have.
Oh, actually, you got one in here that I didn't see before. Okay, so maybe, um...
Thank you very much.
No, because I looked through them all, but this one was, this one must be a newish one.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, are you looking for peer review by subject, or are you looking for one firm to do all of the peer review?
That's one thing we were gonna discuss. I don't, I think we can kind of probably cover it by subject, and I know, although, I know TEC was willing to subcontract the areas they're not experts in. I don't know if any of the others would, I don't know what the, but...
That was sort of on the agenda for us to discuss tonight, because there was, there was really only one that offered all of that, and then there were others that offered pieces. So, we were all just sort of reviewing everything and figuring we'd discuss it tonight.
Okay.
So, how do you wanna do it? Do you wanna just see where the temperature is, or?
Yeah, I mean, let's just cover each major, each of the major groups, and see if there's any really, I guess, objections to any in particular, or, and then we can vote on, you know, then we can basically decide whether we wanna have one cover everything, or if we wanna split them up, you know, based on that. I mean, I think the first thing is just, are there any particular comments on, do we have any particular discussion on the civil and traffic in general? There seem to be like three categories, more or less, of the different groups, so, well, there's only one option for the other one, so I believe, I heard TEC would probably go with...
TEC, I think, would do all, every, they have the one that would do everything.
They do all, all of them, but then they'd outsource to one of these other ones anyway.
They outsource architectural and...
And environmental, including wetlands, and also the specific request for a wetland biologist, or wildlife biologist.
Can I make a comment about the wetland portion of this? Is that...
It's closed.
But we can ask them a question.
Okay.
If there's anything in particular we wanna...
There are numerous municipalities that do use TEC.
As sort of a one-stop-shop kind of thing?
Yes, I, both. I have a lot of municipalities that use them for traffic. And then, but I have had a 40B where they have done exactly what they're proposing to do here.
And who did they subcontract to?
They subcontracted the wetlands to Ecotec.
Okay.
And that was it. Oh, the architecture was the same ones that we used in Wayland.
Davis Square.
Davis Square.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I mean, Davis Square, I would definitely recommend as architectural review. Ecotec, I'm not as familiar with. I had given Rebecca the name of LEC Environmental out of Wakefield, but they have other offices as well, as an environmental review. I, only thing I would say with regards to the TEC proposal to subcontract is, I think you want control over the subcontractors are.
Yeah. Did they give any indication of who they would subcontract out to, or that kind of to be determined?
The two that were listed, there's Lucas Environmental, and then for the architecture, they reached out to both of their subconsultants, which is Davis, and then as well as Sam Architect, Davis said that they were not available to provide peer reviews at this point in time, and the only one that got back to them was Sam Architect. And they said that if there was a particular firm that we would prefer to work with, that they would be amenable to working with them as well.
Oh, that's good.
LEC is very good, too, with environmental. Many cities and towns use them, so you could request that they use them.
I recently represented the Board of Appeals in Newbury, in which there were environmental issues involved, and they did retain LEC as their peer review consultant.
I didn't see any information for them, that was.
I didn't get that. I didn't, I don't know if I got the email for that.
Really?
Yeah, that's...
I'm sorry.
I thought I sent it to you the day after the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think overall, I'm not opposed to, I think, for ease, we'll use the term one-stop-shop. You know, as long as, as Rebecca said, as long as we have some kind of control or say, and who the subcontractors are, and as long as that's known, and we can have some input into that.
Well, the only concern about the subcontractor thing would be, would there, you know, I mean, what are the, what are the benefits if we can just basically contract out parts to each individual?
Wouldn't they need to...
What do you gain by having a subcontract out?
So, it's actually, with, with regard to the peer review and the 53G, it's actually easier, what you're saying, that if you hire TEC to do what they can do, and then you hire LEC to do what they can do, and you hire Davis Square, or whomever the architecture would be. And that way, you have that amount that has to go into the 53G account, and every, it's all, it's known. It's known, this board knows. And so, that's probably the cleanest way to do it.
So, okay, so basically, you go to TEC and you say, "Okay, here's who we wanna use. You subcontract with them." Because the one thing I did like about TEC is that they had a project manager who sort of oversaw the whole thing, you know, and just sort of gathered all the pieces and sort of presented it all together, as opposed to all the different people you have to interact with. And that is, so, but we could just go to them and say, "Okay, if you're gonna subcontract this and this, this is who we want you to subcontract with." Can we...
You could. You could do that, or you could just simply contract with LEC yourself and contract with an architect yourself. You might lose that project manager that you like, though, if you did it that way. So...
I just like that idea. I don't know how it works out in general, but in theory, it sounds good.
It does. It is.
As far as I'm concerned, as long as they're amenable to taking suggestion from the board as to who the subcontractors would be, I don't have any concerns with that approach.
Can that be in the language of the agreement, that we can specify, you know, that we have input into who we want for certain, you know, for the outside contractors they're gonna hire? Is that possible, or?
It could maybe be with our client authorization form that we do for our boards when we have peer review consultants. They provide kind of a general scope of services and what they're gonna do from a project management standpoint, and they can list that they'll have that vote by the board. I would imagine that that would be suitable.
Well, I guess also in that, are there any interest in the, are there any discussion on any of the other civil and traffic options? I, please, their TEC are leading choice for civil and traffic to begin with. Then we can discuss the subcontractor part.
They, I, I sort of took it in a different approach. I took the four, and I sort of just numbered them, like one, two, three, four, based on my preference, I guess. And I figured we'd sort of match it up and see who, see who matches. But I did have TEC as my first choice for civil traffic, civil and traffic.
Any other?
Anybody else has, somebody else is number one for their civil traffic? I had, Stantec is my second choice for that.
Stantec. Yeah, I mean, I didn't really necessarily see anything specific that stood out against TEC, or in favor of the others. And I know, we have worked with some TEC before, so...
Well, I sort of eliminated Wright and Pierce, because it didn't look like they had a ton of experience with 40B. I was really more looking for experience with 40B projects specifically. It looked like they had a lot of other type of experience, but not specifically 40B projects. So, that was sort of my criteria. I know that TEC does have, number one, experience with the town. They have a lot of...
Yes.
Experience with the town bylaws, and they sort of know the town, how different parts of town already. So, there's sort of that learning curve that, and then Stantec, I thought, had similar experience with 40B specific projects. That was why I sort of chose them second. I chose TEC mostly because they were, as number one. I sort of saw them as equal, but I chose TEC as number one more because of the experience they've already had with the town. They know this area pretty well. Wright and Pierce look like they had a lot of experience, but not really a lot. And a lot of it was sort of out of state, Maine, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
No, I agree.
As we all know, Massachusetts is a little different than everybody else.
None of the other ones have 40B.
Exactly. That was sort of my point.
No, I'd agree with that.
John?
Yep.
So, are we saying TEC for civil and traffic?
I am good saying TEC for civil and traffic.
Agree.
Okay.
So, now the discussion falls in, do we let TE, do we guide TEC in choosing subcontractors, or do we wanna pick particular? And we only have Sam Architect as far from that, from the design perspective.
I mean, architectural, again, Davis didn't have the ability to do it. And then I also had reached out to, because I had worked in the past with the Cecil Group, which is, I guess, now the Harriman. And they didn't return my inquiry. So, I did try and reach out to some other architect... And they didn't return my inquiry. So I did try and reach out to some other architectural firms, but I wasn't successful. But I can definitely expand my research if you're unsatisfied with what's before you.
Who did you use in Wayland?
It was Davis Square.
No, who did you use, the applicant?
For architect. I don't know if to do interview stuff or not.
So.
Yeah.
My understanding is T E C uses Sam Architect, right? That's their subcontract, their preferred subcontract.
It's one of their options, yeah.
They use multiple, but that's the one that they reached out to and said, can I have qualifications? They said, yes, we're available here. There's a list of qualifications. And then the other firms that they have subconsulted out to for other services such as this, did not either have time or did not give them qualifications. Sometimes cold calling is easier.
And you don't want to cold call for something like this. It's not the same, like. I wasn't opposed to them. I just was.
Hoping there were more options.
Yeah, hoping there was just something else to choose from, like a buffet.
All right, well, then, let's jump back to wetlands, environmental, and. T E C say anything about wildlife biology? I thought you mentioned.
Didn't they have Lucas?
Lucas, T E C was Lucas, right? Because they cover all three.
Or is he separate?
They did the wetland, the wetland scientist and had experience with wildlife biology. And then I believe Stantec also had experience with wildlife biology, because at the last meeting, the board had requested specifically in terms of the habitat, to make sure that somebody was qualified, and from what I was told, that would be somebody with that particular background. So I was trying to find firms that kind of made both the wetland aspect and the wildlife.
Okay, but he was a separate one? He wasn't, he wasn't who T E C?
Lucas Environmental, because of the expression of the impact of the habitat, was the one that T E C had proposed.
Okay, that's what I thought there was, but I couldn't.
But I, I didn't get Paul Zino.
You know, I first, I don't know how it didn't go out.
So, so I don't know.
So I'll send you again her, I guess, for the first time, her contact information.
Yes, so I don't know if they have other wetland bio, wildlife biologist.
L E C does.
Okay, so then that might be.
L E C is, is full.
Yeah, they're, they're large.
Yeah, they have like four different offices.
Yeah.
And then the other firms that were in the packet were wetland scientists and one specifically wildlife biologist that the Conservation Commission specifically uses for part of two, Groveland. Mark Jacobs, Mark, and I'm not even gonna begin to pronounce his last name because I just can't. Then the other one was Greg Cosmic with Williamson's Parages. And that's who they, who they used for applications for N O I's, R D A, N R A's, and all those other filings with. But those are more individual people that they contracted than larger firms that got the亙s as a board.
Any preferences in regards to?
Well, I mean, look. The only thing I noticed is that, is that the, the two Marks definitely have both local and Groveland experience, which I like. The other ones might, but they didn't, they didn't state it. I always like a local favor if we can.
And is our Concom going to have some?
Those are those ones. Mark Jacobs, Williamson's Parages is the other job.
They're gonna have some say in all of this, too, before it's over, is that true?
Yeah, there is, I believe, we can ask.
Concom will have some approval process.
Conservation, I mean, we had discussed that it might be beneficial to have conservation have the same peer review, because they're already in the loop with what's been happening and the conversations that are taking place, so that if we choose somebody, a wetland scientist, to review that at this stage, it would be beneficial and easier in the process for them to review once they file their N O I with Conservation.
Yeah.
And I would presume, and you may want to ask the applicant this, but I would presume that would be the preferred approach for them, because it saves them money. And it can be very difficult, you know, on a single project, to be having it on a, on a specific issue being reviewed by two different review engineers, because you're not always gonna get the exact same comments and the exact same insights, so it's better to have one doing it for both the Concom and the board if it can be coordinated.
So that would lead to.
I think that.
One of, one of these three, yeah, Jacob, the Marks and Williams.
That works with our board.
Right.
Lucas Environmental seems to have, it's like ecological risk, but not necessarily wildlife.
Yeah, like I said, that's the only thing that jumped out at me was, you know, they obviously all look very qualified, but I like that, that the two Marks both have Groveland and other very, very local experience, like, such as, you know, Newbury, Newbury Port, Lord and Hatcher.
Oh, yeah, okay, then, good.
Yeah, that's more, more local.
Exactly.
Individuals or firms.
All right, so.
Rebecca, do you know if Concom has one that's their go-to, or do they spread it out?
It depends on the project before them. It's usually a very selective process when they have certain things, if there's a culvert crossing, or if there's, you know, proximity to a certain wetland, or bernal pool, or what have you, or if it's a certain type of development, is it a residential type of thing? Is it more of a subdivision, more commercial? So they've said that those are usually their, their go-tos, but it does vary project by project. So I think on a larger scale level, I would say that the most recent one that they had in terms of a larger development with a crossing and the works was Williamson's Parages.
The one I didn't break.
Did they have a review done when they previously ran through this project for the, anybody know? When they ran through for the conservation, for filling in the mine, the quarry and everything?
I don't know. Do you happen to know that, Rebecca?
I'm sorry, good.
So when they went to Concom the first time, right, to deal with the filling, did they have a peer review?
They never went to Conservation for the filling of the quarry. They went to Conservation for a, some type of erosion or sediment control issue.
Was there a peer review down at that point?
I don't believe there was a peer review at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so, but I figured I'd ask, because I didn't get that feeling, but, all right, so I guess by our line, we have three to choose from, right?
Or we say.
I would, yeah, I would hold off in choosing until you can coordinate with the Concom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who they intend to use.
Do we, well, we would confirm, I guess, question at hand really is, do we want to subcontract out to T E C and recommend? One of the, you know, recommend one of their, and then coordinate with Concom on with them, and, or do we want to keep wetlands and separate? And then, I think my inclination would be to have T E C cover the civil and traffic, probably contract out the architectural review, which would probably end up being Sam, assuming that they are still available. And then coordinate wetlands and environmental separately with Conservation.
I think I'd agree with that.
And that way, you can also get the process started.
Yeah, yeah, we can get through.
Well, that's what I'm, I don't want to hold off any longer. Like, we've already held off too long, as far as I'm concerned already, so. I kind of want to get at least civil and traffic moving, because that's gonna, and then wetlands, pretty close thereafter, so.
Need to get.
Architectural, we could do that last. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't seem as urgent.
You know, if it happens to come in before, we can, but.
Right.
I mean, it's all a question of when they come in more than anything else, I think, at this point.
Right.
But as far as wetlands and wildlife, if we choose one that we know that Concom already works with, then I don't think, if we set to Concom, we.
I mean, we don't have to formalize it tonight. We can ask, you know, Concom, hey.
We'd like them to coordinate and use the same. I'm sure they wouldn't object, seeing as how they use them already.
No, those are the ones that I talked to, the chairman, Mike Dempsey, he was gonna actually stop in along the way there in the meeting next door.
Okay.
Those are the resumes they gave me.
The only concern is if they choose based on the specifics of the, the review, then maybe they have more insights into what their, the, the particular aspects of it than we do. That's, that's the only reason that I would. I don't know. The meetings sound like it was gonna be a long meeting, so.
We don't have to make that decision unless, right, we can get the other ones going.
All right, well, I guess we don't necessarily have to, we can. Do we want to discuss any of it with, or do we have any specific questions in regards with the, for the applicants? Anybody?
I don't think so at this point.
At this point.
All right.
Well, all right, so can we move on something here?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
Like to make a motion to approve or to.
Select.
Select T E C to cover civil traffic and make a recommendation with T E C as a, to cover architectural review. And recommend Sam Architecture for that, assuming they are available.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, so we get that covered.
All right, two.
Two.
All right, well, actually, three, because we got architectural, too.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess my question would be, of the, I sort of want to take a poll of the board. Of the three environmental people that we were given, that we know also work with Concom. Who, does anyone have a specific order in which they would prefer, or someone that they would like to advocate for? Somebody that jumped out at you, that you really liked? Somebody you didn't like? Anybody?
Yeah, like I said, I think they all, they all look obviously very, very qualified. Like I said, the only thing, based on, you know, not, having firsthand knowledge of them, and looking at the, what was put in front of us, that, that Mark Jacobs or Mark G, you know, had local, had local Groveland experience and local, other surrounding town experience, so, which, which I like, so.
Is it possible we could use the same guy as Concom?
That's, that's a goal.
They use both Marks and Williamson's Parages.
All of these in the past.
Right, so I think we want to, basically, we want to go, when we say, hey, to Concom, we selected one of these guys, what do you think? Can we coordinate and pick the same one?
So I.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with Williamson's Parages. They're definitely a civil engineering focus, more so than the wildlife. So that may be that the reasons they use them on certain occasions is when they have issues. That is more of a civil engineering issue than it is strictly a wetlands or wildlife issue. It, it may be that your best approach would be to actually get some feedback from the Conservation Commission as to what their concerns are with this project, and that will help you direct, you know, together, the type of review that should be done here.
Certainly looks for me. Yeah, because I do have concerns about the wildlife and whether or not. Since those aren't specifically addressed on, don't believe they're addressed on the Mark Jacobs or the other Mark.
Well, Mark did, Mark G did say that he specializes in amphibians and reptiles in New England in his services.
Amphibians and reptile ecology.
Thinking of my fingers. Again, I agree. I think we should reach out to Concom.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And, you know, I mean, my hesitate, I don't want to necessarily go with, because of our timelines and everything, I'd rather go with a larger. Firm so that we can have more guarantee that everything will get done. You're dealing with, you know, one person in the firm effectively, then who knows what.
Well, I think what Paul was trying to say is that he has worked with this bigger firm, and.
And they're not.
They're not. So, to me, that leaves two options, one of the, one of the Marks, right? So, and I think what Paul is suggesting is that we talk to people in Concom, see who they would prefer for this particular project, who they, if they were going to pick, who would they pick? Right, if this were an isolated project, and then I think it makes sense to choose them, because they're gonna choose them going forward for their project, so. Now, the question I have about the procedure for that, so, do we have to wait until the next meeting to vote on that again, or can we sort of?
We can certainly authorize Rebecca to have that conversation with you.
And choose it outside, because I don't want to wait a whole nother two weeks so that we can vote, I just don't want to delay it any longer than maybe.
I mean, I don't think two weeks is too big of an issue here. I don't think you're really gonna get to these issues in a meeting sooner than that anyways. I mean, I think you'll start off with the civil engineering, the traffic. You have time to get to these other issues, still.
Well, my gut says that the environmental is gonna be a big part of this, so I'm thinking I wanted to get to that, so that whoever it is has plenty of time to review all of the issues that may be there. And we had sort of thought that environmental would sort of be at the end anyway, because it would take time to do all that, but.
So in, in two weeks from now, you're only a month into the process, so you have another five months worth of hearing time to, to complete it. I think that's an ample amount of time to do the environmental review.
Well, let's have Rebecca reach out to Concom.
And see who they would.
See who they recommend.
Of the two Marks.
Of the two Marks, yeah.
Right, we had, did we narrow it down to the two Marks?
I think we agree on that, yeah.
Right?
Should get two firms?
No, well, we already, we, we sort of have narrowed it down to the two Marks.
Yes.
So the question is, if they were going to choose for this project, who would they choose? Which Mark?
Oh, I know the answer to that question, because one of them only focuses on turtle habitat and the other focuses on wetlands. Mark Jacobs and then Mark, the gentleman I cannot pronounce.
Yeah, Mark G we're calling him, yeah.
Greg.
So that, so I do know that when I, when we, when the request was sent, Mike Dempsey had C C'd me on, would you be available to provide peer review services for wetlands, and then the other one was for turtle, so.
I see.
The Mark G was for turtles specifically, and the Mark Jacobs was for wetlands.
Okay, so theoretically, they would contract with both of them.
They're separate, yes.
For both, one for, one issue and one for the other, had it been an isolated project.
Yes, my apologies.
Do we want to do that, or do we want to go with some firm that'll cover both? Like Lucas or L E C?
No, I mean, I'm comfortable going with the two Marks. I mean, there were our two choices anyways on the top, and so if we can get, if we can get both, I mean, that's.
And if that's who Concom's gonna use, then it makes sense to stick with it.
I think in the end, it's, makes things streamlined for everyone.
Mm-hmm, great.
Yeah, well, assuming that's, I'm not saying Concom couldn't use one of our recommendations either, but we'd have to talk to them to find out.
Well, we'll just confirm, can we confirm that, Rebecca?
I trust they're just, I'm gonna use for this, then I even make. So.
Any, anything else we want to?
May I ask just a process question, nothing to do with your opinion? So if we're gonna hire T E C, T E C to get moving, scoping it and getting the funds, how are we gonna coordinate to just get that done officially? Is that still on that? Is there a designated person? Is Rebecca gonna provide the scope and go through process so we can finalize that? We know time.
Are we looking at two weeks from now, or, or a month? I guess if it's two weeks, it's not that big of a deal.
I'm not sure that. Gee, I'm not sure that the traffic report can be reviewed with comments within two weeks.
Well, I'm, just in terms of scope and selection, not, not the discussion, I'm just wondering.
So, we would just be waiting for a proposal?
In which case, I think what, what Paul suggested, if we're not gonna see you again for a month, then either designating Rebecca a member of the board.
We'll go see you in two weeks.
Okay, then that's fine. If we could get the scope within two weeks, then I think that's, you know, no one's.
And will peer review have time in two weeks to be productive and do anything, or are we better off waiting a month to allow them to finish their peer review? I think that's what we're just.
No, that's why, I don't, we won't actually get the peer review back within the two weeks.
But you're gonna have to vote on the scope.
The proposal and the money and.
Delegate someone to finalize the scope, a member of the board, or you're gonna. or you're gonna have to get back together again, which would make for a very limited purpose meeting, cause I agree, no one's gonna be doing that. Which is, which is fine, we just would like to get the, the scope and everyone under contract as soon as possible, so we know what we're looking at money-wise as well as scope. And if that's gonna happen in two weeks, and that's the only purpose, we're getting back together, and then peer review presentation on traffic or civil, or whatever is after that, that's okay. Just, I don't want it to, we don't want it to lag too long.
If one person is designated, it might be able to accomplish that within a week, so to speak, or give that peer review a head start.
And you won't have to get together in two weeks, but I'm not trying to.
I don't know what the options are in terms of streamlining that process.
Did they receive the application? Any of, any of, any of them?
I just gave them the, the synopsis stage.
So, so, yes, so that, we're gonna have to send them the application packet, so they can then review it, come back to you with a proposal, and that you guys will have to accept, so, um, they can't, they won't be starting work until the funds are deposited in fifty-three G account, so if you, if we wait two weeks, then they deposit, say, best case scenario, they deposit the money the next morning, you're looking at T E C to turn around the traffic report in two weeks.
And that's doable?
I, um.
We don't think so.
I don't, I, I, I think that's tight on them.
We're just trying to get to an approved scope. We, they should take the time they need to evaluate, and we're gonna take some of the other matters into consideration as well.
We can wait, say, two weeks for them to actually get material and review the material.
Yeah, we're just, we're just trying to get to scope.
Never mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, two weeks is not gonna happen, I know.
No, yeah, and we don't expect that at, at all. We, we just would like to, within two weeks, have a scope, so we could give you the money, so we can get them going, so that we could be productive, maybe thirty days out from that.
That's why I'm pushing to get this figure, figure out who we're using.
Which is fine, so if we get together, whether you wanna delegate it to someone, or we get together as a group within two weeks, I hate to do that to all five people, get together for a fifteen minute meeting, but that's, that's up to you all.
Well.
That would be great.
Fairly sure we need to approve it as a board anyway, so we have to get together.
In my, in my experience, that there's not necessarily any question of the scope, because you're giving them the application, so they know what they need to look at. It's a, it's really a five-minute thing. You guys take a look at the proposal, see what they're gonna do, and you vote to accept the proposal.
But there has to be a vote on.
There should, there, there should. If you're, if you're comfortable having the board, the entire board vote on it, then I, I think that that's fine.
We like you all, but we're just trying not to waste the time getting together for, for five minutes. I know you have better things to do come Labor Day around then, so.
Well, that doesn't bother me so much, cause that would sort of actually be our normal meeting, would be the first Wednesday of the month, so. So, we may have another application, although what's today? No, we don't have any application for September yet.
So, if you have, if you have other business, and that's fine.
No, we don't. That's what I was just trying to determine. We don't, I thought we might, but we don't. Yeah.
We'll be efficient on our last side, how to feed into that, but thank you. We appreciate that.
So, so I think that your motion to select, um, T E C to cover civil and traffic, and then to recommend the architect, is enough to direct Rebecca to, she'll send the entire application packet and request a scope of services and a proposal, cost, a cost proposal. And then we can worry about environmental later.
And I think, then I, I have no problem, does anybody have a problem getting together on the fourth? Even if, you know, they come or not, just to review, hopefully what we get back from T E C and finalize the wetlands and biology and.
I'm fine with that.
We don't have to be here as long as we get a copy of the scope, then, then we could evaluate it for the very limited purposes that we're even allowed to, to review these things, and we may say it's fine with us, just let us know when you approved it, we'll get the money in, and you guys can get rolling.
If the board's amenable, as soon as I receive this scope, I can share it with you, even if it's prior to the meeting.
That, that's fine.
That would be productive, and I think would be a good use of time. I, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd rather be productive. Thank you.
Yeah, I have no problem with sharing out the scope once we get it.
Yeah, so then you wouldn't need me for that meeting, I don't think, would you?
Probably not.
Why? Are you gonna be on a beach in Tahiti or something?
No, I'm not, I just don't wanna drive all the way up here and, and, limited amount of funds for live contract, yeah.
Yeah, for a fifteen-minute. Right, for a fifteen-minute.
But I also wanted to know when the next meeting would be, so I can get it in my calendar now, cause it tends to fill up.
I mean, I don't know.
Would it be two weeks afterwards?
So.
I'm not sure we're gonna have much to do two weeks after that, unless.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, cause I'm thinking we're not gonna have a traffic study back by September, what is it, twentieth or?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, so.
And in, and in fairness too, for your, even if it was just basic civil, based upon what we heard from fire and some of the other related issues regarding potential modifications to respond to the large project issue, we may see a slight modification of plans too. We wanna make sure we get those. So, I would anticipate it'll be at least thirty days.
October second?
From, yeah, so that first weekend in October, to be realistic.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd trust a peer review that was only done in two weeks.
I would, I would decide this at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have to decide it tonight.
No, you don't, we just wanna.
I think you guys have decided everything you need to decide for tonight.
Okay.
And then in two weeks, you.
Right, but then the meeting after that, that was the question, would be October second.
You can decide on that next, the next time, yeah. Cause you, you never know if something comes up.
Like, the man who just walked in.
Oh, yeah, right. But also, like, at your next, you never know if something's gonna come up, so don't, don't foreclose yourself on that yet.
Okay.
But I just, I just pencil in my own.
And the last thing I would only request is, when you do have to vote, and if you think it's a priority of what comes civil first or traffic first, please just let us know, so we can bring our appropriate consultant to the meeting.
Okay, so, since we have a new visitor, Mike, I just noticed, so. The question, Mike is the head of conservation?
Yeah.
So, my question is, can we talk to him about what his recommendations would be for the environmental, so that we could actually do that as well?
Yes, but I thought we already nailed down the environmental based on his recommendations.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, is that all right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Should they vote? Should we open public comment?
Yeah, I would, I would, well, I mean, you, you've been letting the applicant talk, so what's the difference? He's in, he's a town official.
Okay.
Really? Okay.
So, you want me to give you like a two-minute update here on, on the environmental aspect? You know, I, I, I watched your hearing last time, and so I, I know, you know, we have two concerns. The, the site is well-known to us, there's been previous filings. So, uh, our concern is both from the environmental point of view on the wetlands, the buffers, the stormwater management, the runoff from the site. And the second one is the habitat issues, which are primarily dealt with by natural heritage, but somewhat affect what we say and do also. So, um, that's why we submitted a couple of peer reviewers on, um, uh, wetland scientists and also a turtle expert, who we've used before. We have a hundred percent confidence in our peer reviewers. I believe that, based on what I know, which, you know, is only based on limited information, you know, we, the commission believes that the applicant will have to file a notice of intent. Uh, so, what I would suggest is that you, you know, require that in your permit, and previous to that, I would recommend that you require the applicant to file an N R A D, which would bring up to date the, um, the wetland delineation on the site. And perhaps an R D A of the initial plans to kind of figure out how they may be placed in relationship to the wetlands on the site, so.
Mister Chairman, may I ask a question? So, they have not filed for an R D A yet?
No.
So, it's going to be very hard for this board to sit as the Conservation Commission with the local bylaw if there's no R D A? So, that's just something to think about.
That's what I requested at the last meeting.
I saw that in the minutes, yeah.
So, Mike, just to sort of catch you up, since you just walked in.
Sure.
One of the things that we were talking about, um, was the peer review. We were going through all the different peer review resumes and so forth that we received. And so, we were at the point of looking at the environmental ones that were submitted. And so, we were looking at, we'll call him Mark G, cause we don't know how to pronounce his last name.
Yep.
And the other one was Mark Jacobs.
Yep.
So, our question, I think, for the Conservation Commission was, you would recommend Mark Jacobs for wetlands? This is our understanding, so please correct me if I'm wrong. You would recommend Mark Jacobs for wetlands and Mark G for wildlife biology?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we sort of needed to know from Concom, so now we can.
Okay. You know, it'll depend on availability. Mister Jacobs, in the past, we haven't been able to use him recently, so that's why I gave you another name, but as long as he's available.
And the question that I had posed, sort of, to you, but you weren't here, was if this were, let's say, an isolated project, would those be the people that you would use if you were, if this came to you on another, not a forty B, but just a regular, that's who you would pick?
Yes, yes. We try to use people who are not working on any projects, any development applicants in town, so these people are separate, they're not, we don't usually use those specific reviewers. You know, we identify, they're not typically doing work in growth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we need to know.
Question answered.
Can I say one thing about Mark G? I'm sorry, I have my own turtle consultant, Osko, Brian Butler down there. Familiar with, with Mark Gergovich, don't wanna go into that. He was back in, gotta go on your, somewhere.
He is, he's back. I just talked to him the other day.
What I'm told, Michael's always been on, I just don't wanna make sure that someone, someone there, that's all.
Rebecca, have we had contact with either of them?
Um, I was CC'd on the emails that, um, Mike Dempsey had forwarded to both Mark Jacobs and, and Mark G.
Did we get any responses from them, or is it?
I was CC'd on the email to them and the response back to Mike. I didn't personally communicate with either.
But we have had a response, more or less, from both.
Okay. So, can we select them tonight, so we can move forward?
Just make the same motion?
Okay, now that we've, yeah, okay. I can make the motion right to, uh.
It's the same motion. It was the motion to, you, the last one was the motion to select T E C to cover traffic, so I would do motion to select, uh, Mark Ja, Jacobs to review, um, wetland issues and, uh, Mark G to review, uh, wildlife issues.
Do I have to?
I think you actually have to say his name.
I was gonna tell them the same thing.
Mark, Mark.
Gregovich.
Gregovich.
Gregovich?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, select Mark Jacobs for wetlands peer review and Mark, forgive me, Mark Gergovich for wildlife biology.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Okay, I feel better. We got them all picked. Now we can get to work.
And we can do the, hopefully get.
So, now we have to vote to continue the hearing, you know, to the next.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing.
For application.
For application for twenty nineteen dash three to, I believe it's September, uh, fourth, at seven thirty?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I will not be here for the fourth, if it changes, let me know.
Yeah.
Now it's open, so I could come if I had to.
So, our next sort of window that we have available is September eighteenth, but I don't know if we'll have enough to meet.
You won't.
So then October second.
So, so I put October second, figuring that's what's going to happen, but someone just let me know.
Alright, if that changes, I doubt it will, but, thank you very much for coming.
Bye, Paul. I'll talk to you. Um, do you want, do you want me here on the, um, fourth, in case they question the scope or anything like that? They have no ability to.
I mean.
They don't have the ability to question the scope.
If they don't have the ability, we don't even have to offer them the option, do we?
You don't.
We don't have to have any public comment or anything.
You do not. You don't. They, they, the only thing they can, the only thing they can contest is if there's a conflict, and they can question their qualifications. That's it, so. But I'm, I'm happy to be here. If, you guys can think about it, and Rebecca can let me know.
Okay.
Okay, so, but it's, so, it's either way. Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
There you go, we've got everybody.
Beginning of September fourth.
Yep.
Now, I'm gonna be gone, I'll be here for the fourth. I'm gonna be traveling.
It's a five-member board.
Like around the fourteenth to the twenty-fourth.
Well, it doesn't sound like we would have anything actually to do on the twenty-fourth.
In October, I'm traveling.
Yes, we miss this only one.
For about a week.
Strictly speaking, we only, we only need.
I'm trying to work on a guy that.
Well, I think it'd be too late for this anyway.
Yeah, well, probably.
But also, to vote on this, we only need a majority. We don't need.
For the whole application.
Just to approve, you know, who we're gonna.
Right.
Approve the scope and, you know, that kind of stuff. We technically only need three.
Well, that's on the fourth, so that's gonna be a short meeting, which he's available for.
I'm, I'm gonna be here for that.
But then after that, you know, two weeks, the, the peer review won't be back yet anyways, so.
So, where.
Well, you can.
I think it's gonna fit okay.
Yeah.
And the, the other thing that, that I just spoke to Amy about is that you, because of the recent town meeting, vote to invoke the Mullen rule, you would be able to miss one meeting, as long as it's one meeting, and then review the minutes or the tapes on the meeting, and still vote on the matter. So, if there is a, a scheduling conflict that we can't get by one meeting, we'll, we'll deal.
Okay, yeah, I can't see.
And I don't think there's anything we're gonna need to vote on, that we, nothing we need to vote on that we're on four until the end.
Right, the, my only concern, John mentioned that he's gonna be traveling the middle of October, so that one, they're ma, I'm thinking by October,
I can get the dates.
we're gonna have some traffic, we're gonna have civil, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be cooking around that time.
Yeah.
So, do you know what dates you're leaving?
I will get the dates. I, I.
Okay.
I'd be lying.
It will, see how hell comes in.
Will you let Rebecca know?
Yes, I will.
Alright, thank you. That way, you know, you're in the loop. Okay.
He's gonna get out of here, so we should, two minutes?
Okay, yes. Did everyone read the minutes?
Did.
Change, any changes?
None.
You?
Nope.
I mean, you're the editor.
No, I thought they looked, I thought they looked beautiful.
You don't want me to be the editor.
Uh, the only, the only, um, change I did have was on line one forty-seven, which I actually already sent to Rebecca. It was just a typo. It should've been two thousand nineteen instead of two nineteen, but that was my only, my only change, so.
Alright, motion to approve the minutes.
As amended.
As amended, from, what was the date of the meeting?
Oh, uh, August seventh.
From August seventh, two thousand nineteen, um, with the change on, what was it, one forty-seven?
Line one forty-seven.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you. Can I make a motion to, uh, close the hearing? Close the meeting?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, leave.
Do we still need to sign these? I will anyway.
Was a motion made?
I made a motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we're in formal session right now.
We're officially closed, tally. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for dropping in.